Yeah, usually I'll pull this one out. Pull these out.
Call the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Monday, July 11. Gonna speak on the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, for our nation, our land, and the vision of liberty and justice for all.
It's all you.
We're going right into approval of the minutes from May 29.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes just so we can get to discussion on it quick.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion?
My discussion is, if someone from the public is talking and they're not recognized by the mayor to speak, is it actually part of the public record, especially when they don't come up to the podium? According to Roberts Rules, it's not. And I'm wondering why we're putting it in the minutes if they weren't recognized by the chair. It's on the...
Are we referring to...
The first page after the chief's department head report where a resident...
Rosemary's comment?
Yep. My motion was to point that out and the proper way of doing it is not have that in there, so I would move to strike that comment in that motion to adjust it that way.
The whole section, Tony?
Yeah, anything that, from that point she... Right after they talk about the Swift Lake, you can skateboard and that's not a problem, from that point after that, all the way down to where...
The end of it, isn't it?
The end of it, where Val does her department head report.
Okay, with those changes to be made, do we have a motion?
Do we need another motion or we just need to vote?
Any more discussion, if not, we vote.
Okay, any more discussion about that? Then we'll just vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Approval as the agenda as it is written, we have some additions to fill it, it looks like.
We do have actually four additions. One, Chris is here. 9A, Chris Larson wants to address the council on some stuff with Phase 1. The private service relocations. And we got 10G, which you have in front of you, on the Wheels Across the Prairie Museum. Request for yearly contribution. We have 12B. Resolution 2018-30 approving election judges for 2018 primary and general election. And then we have 13B. Tracy Public Library Minutes, April 5th, 2018. And that is it.
With those additions, do we have a...
I'd make a motion to approve as amended.
Second?
First and second, any discussion?
Question on the resolution for the election judges, are we approving a list of judges or just their wages?
What you're approving is allowing the city administrator to certify a list to the county.
Okay.
And then you're also certifying, allowing him to purchase the ballots and supplies for the election as well.
Only question.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Any identified, any conflict of interest from the, we have on our agenda? Hearing none? Nothing, nobody from the public out there that wants to comment in the midst of it? So Chris.
Thanks. The only thing I really wanted to discuss tonight is last time I mentioned the private services that still need to be rerouted for Phase 1. Shane, Matt and I had a conference call later that week, kind of brainstormed some ideas there. And I don't think we have a solid recommendation yet. One thing that came up though was, so the city has been offering basically financing where people can, they get the plumber lined up, but the bill comes to the city instead, and then the city assesses the people back. And maybe putting some sort of expiration on that program or suspension to try to give people, you know, give them a little more sense of urgency as well as, it seems like, I don't know if I would say it's equally or mostly plumbers are the ones that are not being super aggressive about getting things lined up. It's not necessarily the people calling plumbers, it's plumbers returning calls and getting things lined up, so hopefully that would incent them to get something scheduled because they're basically guaranteed payment if it comes from the city versus sending a property owner a bill and there might be some fear, concern that they won't get paid, so if the, if there's some sort of expiration or temporary suspension of this program.
As a question, right now it's set up, they have to apply for it?
Yep.
In your discussions with Matt, did you come up with anything where you could just say, "All right, it's coming up on go time to do the next overlay and to finish that project off. We're just gonna go ahead and do it?"
Yeah.
The only problem with, for what I've conversed with Matt about is if they don't have that petition signed, they still have the right to fight the special assessment, appeal it.
For that service, not the other assessments, just for that service.
Just for that service, so. That being said, you know, it's kind of, we're at some risk there with doing that. I know we can't per se finance them, you know, because you can't use public funding for financing.
Right. So there's... Thinking aloud again, there's 10 left?
Yeah, I think 11 and then based on some information we knew, we thought it would probably be down to six or seven relatively soon.
I believe that 11's got paperwork in already.
There is, I believe, three or four petitions that the council has approved.
Right.
That aren't, the plumbers haven't given them or me the dollar figure, because it has to have a dollar figure in it before it can get the final approval from the council. And that's got to be signed by the council and the property owner before it can move forward, so. And I keep telling these people, they keep calling me, you know, "You need to get your plumber to contact me directly or have them get an estimate from them." You're better off shooting high, I mean, they can shoot high and it can come in lower, I mean, it's just...
Yeah, that part of it, it's just getting it done.
Yeah, they just can't really commit to a dollar amount and so.
One was Dunick planning on coming in and finishing up with the punch list items and...
So they, the current contract completion date is the end of June and there's already, I mean, we'll have to give them extension for that, because obviously this is out of their control.
No, it's out of their control.
So they, they're on a big job and I think it was North Dakota, so obviously, you know, if we got word today that the last service was finished, it's not like they can be here tomorrow, they need, you know, they have other commitments that they had to sign up for. I think we were talking early to mid-August of when they could, they want to come in, but
Right.
They don't want to mobilize an excavator to make the handful of repairs, take it off-site and then find out, "Okay, the services are done, so now you can abandon those." All the old existing lines, they'd have to stay in service, obviously. So, I guess, not a direct answer to your question, but they're ready to do it.
You got a timeline in there. Did Matt give any guidance as to what type of wording or anything would be required on a resolution that the council could pass, because we don't want to temporarily suspend that program, but we got to have a way to a way to get it done, because that wasn't acted by a resolution before to allow that, right?
I think the state statute.
The state statute, all right. So you don't really want to stop it?
No.
I'm just shooting from the hip here, I'm thinking, hey, this is going to end the 1st of July. If it ain't in, the number's in, because we're going to pave in sometime in August and or the 15th of July, you know, whatever, but that would require a council resolution in order to do that, though, correct?
Yeah, and the council, I guess the council would not have to approve the resolution either.
You mean the individual resolutions, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's the big issue, it's getting them to get it done. You've got to light a fire under the plumbers and the property.
I was gonna say, it's hard to...
Get the property owners some leverage to light that fire.
I think, like Shane mentioned, maybe there's some concern with plumbers too, that they're they don't know exactly what they're getting into, so they're, they don't want to give a price and be held to it, but like Shane said, they can assume the worst case and, yeah.
Do we know whether those 11 have contacted plumber?
About one. On my notes.
Sounds right, yeah.
And that's the one that didn't collect a certified mail, so.
Basically, I want to ask is what do you want from us? I mean, do you want a motion to give a cutoff date and say you got some tools, or do you want to need to get it done, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be good and beyond that. I don't think we really have a formal recommendation from Matt as far as other tools, I guess, to use that word. Hopefully this is an incentive to knock a few more off the list and I I I don't know, somewhat facetiously was brainstorming of do you, in the next newsletter, give a list of the people that aren't, you know, harness the power of peer peer pressure and have their neighbors kind of lean on them too.
Well...
But you know, if you do that when it's not their fault that...
Right.
I mean, because they did what they were supposed to do, it's the plumber's fault why they're sitting there like that.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
I mean, I suppose if you do this, then they can harp the plumber, but...
Well, and I think that will give the city some options to lean on the plumbers too, to get them out there, say, "Hey, it's got to be done by this or..."
I guess that is it.
My other question on that would be is if we come up with a date and the plumbers are local, plumbers didn't help them out, do we go outside of the community and get them in and just do it?
Let them get whoever they want to, just to get it done?
Whoever they can get, yeah.
I mean, give them a temporary permit for that project only at a different price or whatever, but to make it...
Well, the plumbing license is what, 30 bucks?
15, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's not like it's...
Yeah.
It'll be a pretty simple permit too, it's not like...
Got to have your bond information, your license and insurance, that's about it.
Well, I mean, if if you want a motion to get things started, I'd make a motion to have them completed, you know, in the next 30 days, by 15th of July at the latest.
To be eligible for the financing?
Well, I don't know if you can really...
You can really call it financing, but...
Yeah, I don't know if you can really say that, because it's a state statute, just...
Yeah. State statute allows it?
Allows it.
Doesn't mean you have to.
Doesn't require it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to go away from that, but well, and the caveat on that would be is that they need to know that they're holding up and sort of the plumbers, that they're holding up the project completion.
Yeah.
The biggest thing too there is, we're paying interest on the interim financing, we can't get the final
Till it's finished.
RD until...
So it's costing everybody while we're waiting on a handful of people to get the job done. So...
Matt did mention the possibility, it certainly needs more exploration of like a civil suit and those would be some of the damages that could be pursued, but obviously, we just want it done.
Yeah, we don't understand, we can't do that, I mean, they got tagged for a special assessment, then they get tagged to rehook up and
Yeah.
I understand their point. Yeah, I'd make a motion to they got till the 15th of July to to get this stuff done, so we can move ahead with the we'd use 1 August as a target date for Dunick to come back.
And if not, then out-of-town plumbers can be approached to, because I mean, the pressures has to be put on the plumbers.
Yeah.
Yeah. That we can go out and research and find...
That's the only pressure we're going to be able to put on the plumbers, is saying, "If you don't do it, we're going to let outside people come in and do it. You'll lose the work."
Then would we want to change the date? Would we want to go like by July 1st, so that would get somebody else a couple of weeks anyhow to get it on their schedule to get it done? If we're shooting to make sure everything's done by August 1st, so Dunick could be back August 1st?
I think we can work on that after the 15th, see where we're at, and if we still got a couple, then we'll just decide to go after it then and get it done by August 1st, we can find somebody to do it.
So, after July 1st, you know, if they want to bring out-of-town people in there, if they're not licensed, or you know, our first meeting in July is on the 9th. What do you want to do as far as licensing? You want to do it retroactively or...
Yeah, we could or we could just, we should be able to just do a temporary license for that project if we wanted to, so.
You're saying we went until the 23rd to give them the license and then all of a sudden that gives them just a week and it's...
We could do retroactive or temporary or whatever, we can if we need it, we can do it on a case-by-case.
Specific addresses, yeah.
Or just say Phase 1? If it deals with Phase 1?
Yep, that'd work too.
Make it easy. Probably should get a motion on that then.
What's your final motion?
That'll be my final motion, but...
All set.
We have a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Thanks. While I'm here, ponds are going pretty well. Slowed down, obviously, since Thursday. Pretty slick out there, but...
Are they holding water yet?
Some. Yep, not the right kind, but... Yeah, so it's a big project, but it's going pretty well. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Next one to do the audit presentation?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Couple of new faces here, I'm Tom Olinger from Abdoik and Myers, Government Service Partner, that's been working with Tracy for the last several years, so I'll go through kind of our audit findings and some financial information. I'm not going to go through the thick audit report, but I will go through the management letter, which is the clear-covered copy, the thinner book that should be included with everybody and that kind of goes, recaps everything for us. So, kind of to get started on some of the findings, we kind of continue to have the segregation of duties finding. You know, I think it's just to kind of note that it's important to make sure that we are you know, kind of reviewing disbursements, reviewing payroll, you know, as a function of the council, just because we don't have the proper segregation of duties. I know we've talked about this year having, as part of our client seminar this year, to kind of address some of these on various ways that we can implement some compensating controls to kind of continue to improve that. So I think look for that in the next couple of months here and we can kind of, you know, have you guys, have somebody come out and we can kind of work with you on trying to improve the segregation of duties. I think it's certainly important and I think at this point now, I just kind of wanted to make you aware of, you know, your role as council for oversight on there, but I think there's some things that we can tweak to kind of continue to improve that and try to try to mitigate some of the risk there. We had the finding of the financial report preparation, which has been been consistent, I know you know, most of the cities your size do have us prepare the financial statements. We have management review the financial statements before we issue them, but just to kind of be aware of that we are preparing them. This is pretty common to have happen, just because, you know, the management just doesn't have the knowledge of all the GASBs and all the reporting requirements, so most cities do have us draft those, but we have to make you aware that we did draft the financial statements. The last finding here is related to material audit adjustments. We did have some audit adjustments this year with capital assets, inter-fund loans, and receivables and some payables there, you know, I think you know, overall, the adjustments have been kind of continuing to improve. You know, we kind of continue to do training throughout there, but you know, I think it's important for management to kind of review those journal entries, you know, ask questions of us and see if we can kind of continue to keep working those journal entries down so that they're recorded throughout the whole year, so that, you know, as a council, you guys get accurate information going throughout the whole year with that, so. But it has continued to decrease over the last few years. Okay, getting into the financial information, which is on page 9. The general fund, general fund, fund balance, the unassigned balance is about at 170, or 750,000, which is about 36.9% of next year's budget. We kind of take a look at that, just to kind of make sure that we're following falling within that 35 to 50% on what the state auditor requires, you know, and the idea of this is that the fund balance at the end of the year is at its highest point, because you've just received LGA, you've just received property taxes, and now you'll have five months, you know, five, six months of spending down that fund balance for cash flows until LGA and property taxes come in May and June there. So, they kind of want that minimum balance to be at that 35 to 50% there, so as you can kind of see, the overall trend, that fund balance has been increasing, but you're kind of at the low end of that minimum target balance that we want and and the budget did increase slightly, but it stayed pretty consistent over the last four or five years. So I think we just kind of keep moving that fund balance up. On the next page, this year the fund balance did increase by about 65,000. It was mainly based on revenues exceeding budget. We had some additional state aids that came in of about 26,000. Some additional charges for services that were over budget of about 55,000, and then just some other revenues of 14,000 that were above budget. You know, a combination of all those and, you know, for the most part, the expenditures stayed pretty well on budget for this last year, there was, you know, I think a couple of items where, you know, the municipal building current expenditures exceeded the budget by about 16,000 and fire about 26,000. But overall, if we take a look at the whole current expenditures, we're only about 15,000 over budget there with those funds, so. So, you know, overall, that allowed for that increase in fund balance and we could probably should kind of continue to look at that of just kind of edging that fund balance up so that we're not hovering around the lowest point there. The next page, page 11, is the three-year comparison of revenues. You know, I think overall revenues have stayed pretty flat for the last few years. Taxes have stayed relatively flat, we're at about 790,000 that we collect with that. Intergovernmental revenues, which is both your state and federal and county dollars, had additional 20,000 this year, which is a little over a million dollars from that funding. So, you know, really that stayed pretty consistent over the last three years. Page 12 outlines the overall expenditures. So, for 2017, the expenditures decreased from 16 by about 30,000 this last year. Current expenditures stayed the same, the main difference is with capital outlay, so that's your investment back in equipment and various things there that did decrease this last year. I just want to point out the peer group per capita numbers. So, what we do as a firm, we accumulate not only information from the clients that we audit, but we also get information from the state auditor's office to kind of accumulate data to kind of give you a baseline of what other cities your size are, so we accumulate, you know, quite a bit of data and the peer group is cities your size on what they spend on the particular programs. And that is for last year, because obviously we don't have this year, but for the 2016 numbers, those are the peer group. So, you know, overall, your total current expenditures, we're at about 800 per person. The peer group last year was right around 700 per person there, so you know, I think most of them have kind of stayed pretty well in line with the others, you know, public safety is up a little bit and streets and highways are just right about that peer group average there, but you know, I think that's just kind of some of the comparisons that you can kind of take a look at. Page 13 is your special revenue funds. You know, there was, you know, not a whole lot of change in there except for like the economic development. There was some additional loans that were made this year that that resulted in that particular decrease in a transfer. And, you know, code enforcement did decrease this year just because of some additional expenditures that came out of that fund. But overall, you have about 450,000 in fund balance related to those funds. Page 14 is your debt service funds. Now, these are the funds that are funded specifically for out-of-taxes and special assessments. These are not the debt that is being paid by water and sewer revenues, so you know, kind of taking a look at this, you know, your overall cash in those funds are about 838,000. And your total assets, which really the difference between the cash and total assets is mainly assessments that are yet to be collected too. So overall, you have about 1.4 million in total assets. Your outstanding debt for this last year was about 4.4 million. As you kind of take a look at the maturity dates, we do have the 2008 bonds dropping off in 2022 and then the geo-improvement bonds of 2025. So what I usually like to do is, as we turn to the next page, is to kind of map out what the next 10 years debt service principal and interest are for these funds. So as you can kind of see, you know, principal and interest for the next, through 2022 is right about 500,000, so that means we have to have taxes being collected, you know, and assessments to match with that 500,000. You know, we have our first bond dropping off in 2023, so you see that principal dropping. So, you know, I think the thing we have to look at for planning is, you know, if there are projects between 18 and 22 that are going to be having a tax levy or assessment, that that's going to be additional levy that is going to be put on top of the debt going forward. What you usually like to do is try to stagger it so that when bonds drop off, new ones come on for a particular street project, and mainly these are going to be your above-ground street, not your underground water and sewer. So, you know, I think that's something to look at, that if there are projects that are going to come down the road, you know, in the next five years that are going to be overlay and street that we're going to need to bond for, you know, we should plan accordingly with the debt service levy there. So kind of to give you a little background, the there's two different levies, there's the general fund levy that basically handles your operations, and then there's the debt service levy that covers all your debt payments. So if there is plans of adding this, there should probably be an incremental increase in that debt levy to make sure that when that new debt comes on, that we have the right amount of funds coming in to take care of that levy, otherwise you're going to have a huge spike if a debt that has significant street improvements on comes on at that time. Taking a look at the capital project funds, you know, the 2016 street project... Taking a look at the capital project funds, you know, the 2016 street project is finishing up. That has just a slight deficit of about 45,000. We do have the Tracy Medical Center capital dollars of about 1.5 million, which is mainly to go, you know, back into improvements there. We have permanent improvement, which are just kind of some reserves that you have, about 140,000, and then some different replacement funds, which will total about 300,000 there that are for various equipment that will be purchased moving forward. So, kind of taking a look at the next page, which is page 16, will be some of the enterprise funds. And these are funds that will be funded by various revenues coming in from these operations. So, what we'll kind of go through is each one. The top graph with the blue line and the gray line is basically just showing your cash flows of what dollars come in and what dollars are going out for there. So, you know, as we kind of take a look at that with the O'Brien Court cash flow, you know, receipts are right at about, you know, a little over 40,000 with not a whole lot of disbursements for this last year. So, we're generating dollars from operations there. So, there was, on the next graph down below, just shows your overall cash balance of those particular funds. So, you know, kind of taking a look at that, the cash did decrease this last year by about 100,000, mainly because there was some additional assets, capital assets that came in or that were paid for of about 40,000. And then there were some transfers out to cover some cash deficits of other funds out there. So, in the past, the O'Brien Court has funded some of the other deficits. So, that is why that decreased that way with the assumption, once they collect enough dollars in those other funds, that it reimburses the O'Brien Court cash flow. And the Fifth Street apartment cash flow, that one, we did sell this last year with, so you kind of take a look at, we paid off the debt for the last year of about 273,000. And so, we have a large amount, and then we just, that fund was closed once those operations were completed. The next page is the Orchard Lane Town Home cash flow. As you can kind of see that we had, for 2017, we had, the operating costs and debt payments did exceed the receipts for last year. And, but, you know, a combination of the transfers in of dollars and being able to pay down some of the debt, so we paid down additional $30,000 worth of debt there. We did have a slight cash balance of about $9,000 in this particular fund. So, we'll kind of keep having the, you know, the one thing with this is that there are receipts coming in, that you're kind of continuing to make debt payments there. You know, I think, you know, that's just kind of something to watch, to make sure that we kind of continue to pay down that debt with the Orchard Lane. The next page, the Liquor Store Fund. For 2017, we did have an operating loss of about 21,000. This will be the second of the third year of, a three-year period where state statute requires you to have a public hearing regarding the liquor store. I'm not quite sure if you guys have had that yet and taken care of that, so. Okay, so, so I think that's, you know, that overall cash has been kind of, you know, been running low. You know, I think we, you know, kind of continue to do that. I know you dropped the on-sale for this last year, and we'll kind of reevaluate that and making sure that we get those, that operating income up to where it needs to be and kind of make sure that we're back in compliance there. Taking a look at page 21, the Water Utility Cash flows. As you can see, once again, that the receipts were below the operating costs and debt service there. So, we did kind of continue to decrease there. You notice a big drop from 441,000 in cash down to pretty much zero for this last year. You know, I think there was, well, there was 662,000 that was paid of capital assets this last year, and also, we had debt service that was refunded that was paid off this year. So, we had about 200,000 of additional debt service being paid off. You know, I know we've talked about, you know, this fund and the sewer fund in the past regarding looking at the rates and making sure that we are covering, once the USDA note starts kicking in here, too. So, you know, I think we definitely need to kind of continue to look at rates, and there's probably going to be some significant increases on here. Just to kind of put things in perspective here, you know, you're earning about 100, in the water fund, about $100,000 from operations. And even in the sewer fund, if we combine the water and sewer fund, the sewer fund, we're having, you know, 262,000 from operations there. But, you know, moving forward in 2020, there's going to be almost $370,000 worth of debt service principal and interest payments that will be coming on in 2020. So, and plus additional debt payments that you have, which are probably another, let's see, it would be 126, another 200,000. So, you know, you're going to have pretty close to $600,000 worth of, you know, debt payments coming down the road here. I know, I know there was some rate increases there, you know, but this is some big dollars that we're talking about that, you know, we're going to have to make sure we're funding, whether it's either, I mean, the special assessments, we do have some of those, but a combination of, you know, whether it's a property tax or future rates there, but there's some significant dollars that are going to be needed come 2020, when the USDA notes start kicking in. So, you know, I know we've had conversations about that, but there is a pretty big gap between what you're currently collecting now and what's going to be coming down the road. So, you know, I continue to take a look at that. I don't know if you've gone through an official rate study at all, just to kind of see, you know, what will be needed for this. But I encourage you to at least try to cash flow something out or project something out so that we know where these rates need to be, because it's much easier rather than wait till 2020 to all of a sudden say, okay, we need to double our rates to even be able to cash flow this. So, you know, I don't know what, if there are steps that you have been taking with a rate study or something like that, but I think that would be something that's really important. And this is, this is probably the biggest area that the city needs to really look at because there's a lot coming down the road, both in the water and sewer. I'll kind of jump over to the Sewer Utility Funds, which is fund 23, or page 23. There currently is about 2.4 million in cash there. Keep in mind that that's from the temporary bonds that were issued there. So, we're going to kind of continue to be, I think there's unspent bond proceeds of about $3 million that are going to be paid down over the next, in 18 and forward on Phase Two project. So, it looks like a lot of cash there, but as the project comes, it's going to go quick. And, you know, you're probably already in it where you've seen that particular cash drop down, drowned significantly there, too. So, you know, currently, your bonds payable are at about $10 million. You know, a good chunk of that will be refunded by the USDA at the end of 2019. But I kind of talked to USDA a little bit, and we have, Phase One's going to have about 100, a little over 100,000 in debt service principal and interest as a kind of a rough estimate. And we're looking at about another 260,000 in Phase Two that's over a 40-year period. So, there's a lot there that is out there, and not, you know, after this is spent, not a whole lot of reserves in these particular funds. So, and I know you guys did some rate increases just recently, so we can maybe kind of reevaluate what those are at, but there's, I don't know what percent of increase you had recently here.
It's possibly 25.
Yeah.
Jumped them up a bit.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we could certainly kind of take a look at that, but there, you know, that's quite a bit of dollars that's a gap there that, you know, we're probably going to maybe have to look at some additional increases there, too.
So, it's hoping for some feedback on how that affected the cash flow, because we've been talking about doing another jump.
Yeah, yeah. And I think when you're talking about, you know, almost 400,000, you know, of dollars that are going to have to be paid out, there's probably going to have to be another jump. The Eastview Apartments on page 24, you know, that stayed pretty steady. It's generating some dollars. You know, I think, once again, this apartment complex has been generating some dollars, so it kind of shares some of the cash to help pay for some of the other debt that's out there. So, that's why the cash did drop slightly, is that there was a transfer to cover some of the debt of the other funds. The Refuse Fund, though, on page 25, this year, the receipts were slightly below operations. You know, this is generally kind of a break-even, break-even fund. I'd probably kind of reevaluate that. The two years before, we did have a little bit more in receipts than disbursements last year. You might want to take a look at that if it's a compilation of some recycling expenses or matching up with the refuse contract, just to make sure that we're cash flowing that. There's usually not a whole lot of dollars in here. And if it is something that it is recycling, that the city is, you know, willing to subsidize or whatever, then there probably needs to just be a transfer of that particular portion.
I think that was probably when they did the citywide cleanup. We started that program last year.
Okay.
And that's the fund that it came out of.
Yeah, so I think if it is a citywide cleanup and that's not going to be charged for, you probably should just look at whether it's budgeted transfer from the general fund, just to make sure that we keep that cash flush on there if it's not going to be collected. Yep, and Deputy Registers stayed pretty well, pretty well even, you know, the cash has decreased consistently over the last few years, but the collections of receipts and disbursements, and that was transfers out for particular expenses that were paid out of the general fund with the Deputy Register. Kind of taking a look at page 27, just kind of gives you some comparisons for ratios of various items there. So, like, the overall debt per capita did decrease this year, but you're at about 8,000 per person. You know, the average for cities your size are at about 3,000 per person. So, there is a significant amount of debt, especially with this big project here. You know, so I think, you know, we just got to kind of be aware. And, you know, if you take a look at that debt service coverage there at 0.4%, this is something that, in order to cash flow, you need to be at about one, you know, the 100% cash flow. So, this kind of suggests the last two years, as that debt comes in, the rates have not corresponded with that, and you haven't been collecting, and then that's why those reserves have been dropping there. And kind of taking a look at the assets left to depreciate, with this larger project, you know, the infrastructure is at 64%, which you have newer assets than other cities your size, which kind of goes in line with the current debt that you have. You know, the governmental, which is, you know, basically your equipment and your streets, will kind of continue to increase as the project goes, but you're at about 40% there, where some of the other cities are at about 55% there. But the underground is certainly in good shape. You know, there's definitely, you know, as I had talked about in previous years, there's definitely some urgency to continue to take a look at those rates. You know, I don't want to get to a point where we keep spending down these reserves, and then we're in real deep trouble once the 2020 starts kicking in. So, you know, there's different things, you know, I think, you know, it might be a good idea to revisit a rate study just to see what this looks like. You know, I know some of the rate studies can look at different ways, whether it's base rates and usage rates, and kind of really give you an idea, because not only are you looking at trying to make the debt service payments, you know, you want to make sure that you're kind of adding to reserves so that you can keep maintaining it, too. You don't want to keep limping along, because now, it's a 40-year note. You know you're going to have repairs over that 40-year period to maintain it. So, you know, I think, you know, being able to take a look at that, I think, would be important in what this looks like in the next, you know, five to 10 years, to make sure that we're cash flowing appropriately. Well, thank you, and if there's absolutely anything that we can help with, let us know. Certainly, reach out to us as questions come up. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have a question?
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to help us out with that change?
I suppose. Resilient here. Well, all the officers of the Fire Department went over, the SOPs, or SOGs, I should say, and made some tweaks and changes. There's a lot of irrelevant information in there, a lot of things that we updated hadn't been updated probably for eight years, seven years, so. I don't know if you looked through it at all. Just looking for your blessings on it. If my computer would come up here.
I mean, looking through it, it seems very standard.
Nothing earth-shattering. I mean, it's striking out, a lot of those grammar and, you know, things like bad driving. Bad driving isn't really telling us much, so, I mean, there's stuff like that, I mean, a lot of it. We did spend probably a good eight hours on it, if not more, going through it, so we did it over two nights. So, it was fine-tooth comb, but...
I'll make a motion to accept their revised standard operating guidelines of the Fire Department.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, both. Kerry's. Tracy Layton's on sale malt liquor license.
Make a motion to approve pending all the fees are paid.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Petition for the local improvement for Dwayne Hatch.
So, Dwayne Hatch had some sewer issues that needed to be corrected from Worthen Morgan Project. So, this is similar to what's going on in Phase One.
So, this is similar to what's going on in Phase One. Just looking for, to be able to put that on a special assessment.
Which is what we're doing for other people.
Yeah.
Did he have a sump pump intercept to put in, too, or get that taken care of, or?
Project ended at Harvey. He should.
Is he verified that he's hooked up to it? If he isn't, then he could just, should be able to just put it in with this petition, shouldn't he?
Yeah.
Just to get it done.
That's what a lot of them are doing, on one dig, so.
Maybe we remind him?
Yeah.
Let me, so I make a motion to approve the petition for local improvement.
I'll second him. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Carpenter, would you like to?
Sure. He said a mouthful. I don't know if I can see that much.
As the council knows, I am a 1099 contract employee as the EDA director for the City of Tracy. And what I'm asking for is what I kind of talked about with a lot of you and the EDA board over the past six or seven, or actually eight months now, that if things are going well, and if it's something that you would all agree with, the EDA board would agree with, and that's something that I'm looking at doing, is as of January first, I would like to make it a full-time, just as the, it's already full-time, but as a city employee, as opposed to a 1099. I don't know what the exact timing is that needs to be done. I didn't know if to bring it up tonight, or bring it up two weeks ago, or a month from now. But, so I'm just, I don't think it's anything that needs to be absolutely decided. I can talk to each one of you individually. I do have a number of ideas that can save the city money by putting me on as a full-time employee also. Just an example of that is something that I, the Orchard Lanes is what he had talked about there. We pay five hundred dollars a month for a property manager, for that Bill Chukuski. And I already talked to Bill, not like I went behind anybody's back. And, you know, I think I can handle those duties along with the EDA duties, now that I'm getting more used to what I'm doing. Since I came in kind of green and fresh and new, there's some things that I can handle more now. So, that would be just one of them right there. So, it'd be something that I'd like you to take into consideration for January first, when my contract runs out, which is January first or December thirty-first. So, I guess I'm, I don't know what, we're looking for a timeframe, or, you know, what I need to do from here. I guess I'm looking for a little direction. The EDA board said that they would give me a letter of recommendation that I believe most of them would sign. That would go along with this. So, from here, I don't know what to do next.
I did talk to Jeff, probably been, probably a couple of months ago now. I told him it would be nice to know what his intent is prior to budget, so it can be budgeted accordingly. But other than that, I mean, it's up to the council what they want to...
And it's no different from when we had employees before.
And I've talked with Jeff about, too, picking up some of the, excuse me, picking up some of the additional duties around the city hall offices, stuff like take that deputy court position off your shoulders again, like we had under Bob, and free up some. And I think it'd be a plus with Jeff and Chris working together. It'd just be a seamless all the way around. I think they could complement each other in their abilities and their knowledge. So, it, I'm all in favor of it.
Well, again, I wasn't looking for a decision tonight. I would just like, and it's for, and I will tell you that it's, for a little bit, it's because of insurance reasons that wouldn't need to happen until January first, anyway. You know, paperwork and things like that. But we can discuss other things. I'll be here in a couple of months. I'll be looking for a review again. That would be the nine months. There was one at three months, and then another one at nine months. So, at the start of August, I'll be looking for a review from one of you, or two of you, or four of you, doesn't matter. And then I can have a little bit more that I can show you, too, that, how we can make it a seamless process.
Probably be a perfect time to have the decision made.
Yeah, I didn't know when, like Shane, Shane and I had talked a number of times about it, and I just, you know, I just want it to be the right timing. I don't want to get too late into it. I don't want to, didn't want to do it too early. I talked to Tony, actually, a little bit about that. I didn't know, you know, when something like this had to happen. So...
Like you said, the best part is just before budgeting. So, if that's the direction we're going, we know where we're at.
Yeah, and there'd be have to be renegotiation of wages, and it'd have to be restructured.
Yep, I realize that. But there's some other things I'd like to add to it that I can help out with, too, and...
Absolutely.
So...
Well, just as a suggestion done in your August review, just want to meet with the council in closed session, do the review, and hammer some of that stuff up.
Like before, in August sometime, just...
Tie the two together.
I will set that up with Diane, and we can do that. And maybe the first, or the, is the second one in August? Would that, is that early enough?
If the budget doesn't do it...
First one would be the better.
That's fine. I'm at all of them anyway, so...
Usually the first meeting in September, we want to approve the preliminary.
It'd be the August thirteenth.
Okay.
And we can do a closed session and...
Like at six o'clock, or thirty minutes ahead of time, or something like that? Sit down, and we can go over some things. It's not gonna be a lot, but it'd be just some things that...
We'll do it after the wage salary.
We'll need plenty of time. It'll be after.
Don't try to get it, but you're not dealing with it.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so that's all I got. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And then we have a transient peddler license application. Julia, Southwest Advantage prorate.
So, normally, this license is a hundred dollars for a year. She is only gonna be here for one to two weeks. So, my question to you is if you are willing to prorate it, or if she has to purchase the full year license. And then we also need approval of the license as well.
Does she need a bond? Don't forget that.
I have a bond, a three-hundred-dollar bond, which is, yep, what we're required to have. Yep.
What's she doing?
She's, she's selling books. She doesn't have the books in hand. She just takes the orders, submits the orders, hence the bond. I did talk to Marshall, the city of Marshall, about this, because she is not a U.S. citizen. And I had some concerns about that, and they are peddling in Marshall as well. And I know that they, he indicated that they are prorating a license for her. But theirs is three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, and ours is only a hundred. She didn't ask for it to be prorated. I just wanted, being the council's meeting, to be able to get your input and know what to tell her if the question is posed.
And she's just gonna go door to door and see if you want to purchase?
Have we done this before? Have we prorated?
Not very often. We have never prorated.
And I'm curious, when we call it a transient peddler's license, why there would be a twelve-month period on it? That's something more permanent than transient. And that by putting a time limit on it, that offers an opportunity to ask to have it prorated when, you know, I don't, we don't really want to encourage it, but we don't want to discourage commerce either, I think.
Maybe what you're saying is we should...
I think we should give her the hundred-dollar permit, and keep it at that. That's my opinion, so...
Like you said, because it's titled a transient.
Right.
Yeah, it is a license.
And what dates are put on the license?
In the past, we put the date that the council approves it, and then one year from that date. There's only been one since I've been here. I don't know how many have been here prior to that, but that's how it's been handled in the past. It can certainly be changed.
Said that brings another question, how, what's considered permanent in something like that? Do you have a lifetime?
Yeah. You know, I could see an expiration date. I just don't know. If you come at the first part of the calendar year, I could see it running for the calendar year. If you come in August, it runs the rest of the calendar year, not a full twelve months. That's the way I would look at it, is just a calendar year permit for transient peddlers, but...
And they always come in June, because it's summertime.
Yep.
You know, so that's when they generally come, so...
We lost video.
Came back, though.
Just came back. Almost like it was on a motion, but it was moving or something.
Chief, are you involved in this peddler stuff at all, or are you aware of anything or any issues?
Thank you.
The peddler licenses, we just make sure that they have a license if they are going door to door. If people are coming in and going door to door without stopping at city hall to do the bond and everything else, we try to shoo them out. So, they should have that permit in hand.
Would you like to see a timeframe put on it? Just for your sake? That you just, you know, like we're saying, it's a calendar year. So, now, let's say they're here for two weeks, and then all of a sudden, they show back up in November, and they show up in February. They wouldn't have to stop back downtown at all, would they?
No, and they're from overseas.
No, but I mean, I know that. But if there's a different group, all of a sudden, that's to show up, and all of a sudden, people are calling you up every two months, going, hey, there's somebody pounding at my door again. Would it be better off to give them a license and go, you have thirty days?
I don't know.
But somebody's gonna be pounding at the door anyway, because they're not gonna know that it's the same people, or not.
Common practice has always been they bought it for a year.
For a year. And I know that's how Marshall handles it, because he indicated to me that they prorate it, and they charge three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, because they do tend to come back year after year.
I was just asking, just to clarify. Well, I'd make a motion that we issue the transient peddler license for a year, but we just leave the rate at a hundred bucks.
Year from today, or a year from January?
Oh, now you throw that in.
Just asking.
I would do the calendar year. So, it'd be through the end of December.
But I have a question, though. When you say you have a hundred-dollar bond, like, what does that protect you? How much...
It's a three-hundred-dollar bond.
So, it protects three-hundred dollars, right?
I don't know how bonds work.
Yeah.
So, she collects money from people, and then they don't get their books. Three-hundred bucks.
Yep.
That's not very much.
No, it's not.
So, I definitely would go with that it expires December thirty-first.
Is that your second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Wheels Across the Prairie requesting their yearly contribution of three-thousand dollars.
But it increases, is it not?
It is. What I could see, we paid them two thousand last year. They did tell us last year that they planned on increasing that.
And we've talked about it before, too. It was like, they're just trying to get more so they can do more. And they understand that when we get to budgeting, this is usually one of the first ones that gets a little cut to it. So, it's just a matter of getting it in. So, it's when we come to budgeting, this is what they're looking for this year.
And this was budgeted for?
Three thousand or two thousand three.
So...
I thought we raised it, too. And we haven't dispersed that amount yet.
No.
I would make a motion to just give Wheels three thousand dollars for the 2018 calendar year.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-29, extending franchise agreement to December thirty-first of 2018.
Our favorite.
It's our quarterly extension.
How does this burn us, maybe?
Okay, so educate me.
Charter...
Why do we continue to?
Because we don't have any choice.
Because otherwise, people in town won't have...
Won't be able to choose charter.
They won't have any competition with them. But how many years has this been going on? I bet since I've been on the council.
Pretty much, yeah.
Two years. At least.
And they're not any closer to day with the resolution on the franchise agreement than they were two years ago.
And that's their incentive, too.
Yeah, this is their franchise agreement, so, and nobody's ever pushed it on. We're not, City of Tracy isn't big enough to push them on it. So, they basically need the seven-county metro area to go, no, you guys are gonna correct this.
I don't even know if that would happen, either. I think if we didn't do this, they'd still be here. I don't think they're gonna pull their equipment out of the community, because they don't have a franchise agreement now.
Do we know? Do they have a franchise? Is there agreement, like, with Marshall and all the other towns? Have they done those or not? Do we know?
They're all in the same boat.
They're all the same?
I...
Jesus.
I would like to see just no action on it and see what happens. You know, that would be, I don't think it's gonna change it. I think we could at least not have to bring it up every quarter. But that's...
Well, we're going to six months now this year.
Yeah.
I did notice that, though. It's six months.
Yeah, we went from January till end of June, and now July to December.
Next year, we'll make it a yearly one.
Just wondered if we're wasting time and paper on it, to be honest with you.
Yes.
Can you refresh my memory? Does, do they give, does the city get part of, I mean, a kickback from them at all for them being here?
That I've seen.
Aren't they supposed to, though?
No, the gas company don't, either.
Yeah, a lot of the franchise fees were to help with that equipment back there, and that would be about it. I think that was all in the agreement. There was no cash that I remember seeing it.
I just don't want people to be the ones that get punished because we don't pass a resolution. I mean, it takes us a matter of five seconds.
I don't think they'll do anything, but I'm, that's just me.
Yeah, but do you want to be the first one they call when all of a sudden, people are all losing their charter?
They probably will.
I guess I would make the resolution, or to approve the resolution 2018-29, to extend the franchise to December thirty-first of 2018.
I'll second.
First and second, we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Do I have to do a count?
I'll do a roll call.
We can't tell who said that, but... Okay, hold your roll call. It's in Shane's room.
All right. Jerry?
Aye.
Koo?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have resolution 2018-30, approving election judges for the 2018 primary and general election.
I apologize, Tony, it does have the judge salary in there as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution 2018-30.
Second it.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, do the motion to prove that?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
First and second, any discussion?
I have one question. Lawyer fees, emailing the lawyer, is that still going to use Shane as the administrator to approve those email trails? Or do... you, Shane, as, as the administrator to approve those email trails or do we have?
We get a statement on them.
Right, you get a statement for the bill, but you know.
He's asking who they go through to.
Who authorizes them to go to the, to the attorney? I mean, if, if we have.
Like generally if.
If we have board members firing off an email to, to Matt and then he answers it and we get billed, is, do we have any controls to stop that? And the reason I bring it up, there's over four hundred dollars in this month in charges for emails on, on charter questions. And I thought he was at the meetings. Why are we?
He was, we teleconferenced him at one meeting. The rest is email. He did come to the first two meetings of the year, but on these last meetings, he hasn't been here physically in a while.
If we, my question is, how, how are we controlling that? I mean, it, it should be, in my mind, if they have a question, they should come to the people responsible for paying the bills, i.e. the council or the administrator, and say, hey, this is what I need to know. And then the decision made then whether to spend the money to get the answer or not. Or save up all your questions and do it in one lump sum instead of seventy five dollars every email.
I noticed that that was like four hundred and fifty or whatever it was. And I, I agree. I think that needs to go through the administrator because we don't want anybody on any commission.
I looked up this contract, see what is the contract, if that says anything, and then I'll contact.
I think all we need to do is talk to our board members, say, hey, if you got any legal questions, bring them to me first and I'll forward them. To me, that's, that's the best way to do it. Otherwise, you're just going to.
That racks up very fast.
And then there, well, and there's the paper trail too. Because if they're all coming for, from our administrator, all the questions, we know all the questions that are being asked.
And if they're answered.
Instead of.
Say, redone it and, yep.
I'll let Matt know too.
Aye.
Any further things?
Through the administrator.
For a couple more weeks. That was my only question.
Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we can do it now with the breakthrough. Can we do the public record for the library at the same time?
Sure, yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent counters with breakthrough beverage and the library board minutes.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And unfinished business, land purchase from Rosemary Martin?
I attached a copy of the easement.
I don't see that.
There's a little map at the bottom that kind of puts it a little better perspective. Not really. But according to what the county has and what that easement shows, there's actually conflicting information. Because the county actually shows the Martin lot to go all the way back where the easement actually shows it as a hundred-foot depth. So it looks like most of the easement actually was not on Martin's lot, but on Bonnie Clyde's and Seeger's two lots and then John's drug. And then it jogs over. So the alley is more like a Z shape, kind of, more than like a curve like the alley shows now, you know, with the, with how it's laid out.
So the easement doesn't affect Martin's property?
If you go off of that, unless it's been changed, which I can't find anything that's changed, excuse me, based on the, the easement that's written, there's only like two parking spaces directly behind the building.
Right.
But the way that alley was actually put, put in, it is kind of cutting into her property.
Uh, a little bit. Let me try to pull it up here. Let this map about memorize. Because the way the county has it platted out, it isn't the same. It shows it going all the way back into the alley, but it, based on that, it doesn't.
Like Jerry said, the alley isn't this shape right now, is it?
No, it doesn't have the sharp. But I think that's why Tony was saying she would be able to park on that one portion that is.
Straighten out her property line. She could angle them in there. And it's two apartments going in there.
It didn't work on Wednesday either unless you go right through the front.
Yeah, there's going to be an upstairs apartment and a downstairs.
So they wouldn't need more than two parking spots.
Could be the four is what she said. If it's a husband, wife.
Well, if rather off street, she's concerned with off street parking for winter snow removal. If there are going to be more, she's got a lot big enough over by your other building so she could leave one of the vehicles over there to get back and forth. I mean, it's, she's got more than enough parking spaces over by the, her apartment building and down the alley.
So based on that easement, based on the easement, the, her lot actually ends here.
Yeah, according to the way the easement's written.
Yep. So then it would continue here, I believe. Yeah. And it cuts over into this and then shoots north again. The biggest thing is what's recorded there. I'll have to probably get ahold of the county and see.
Yeah.
Because the legal that they have here isn't very clear either.
Nope.
It says southeast, one foot, lot 10, and northwest, 20 foot, lot, lot 11, block eight. So that really isn't saying much.
I don't think so.
Now in that easement showing the lots 23 foot wide and a hundred foot long. Because everything on the downtown is 25 foot width, is a lot.
So were that white, isn't that a white car that's on there?
One here.
Right there, right?
Yep.
So does it go all the way back or does it, where does it cut off at?
Well, these are all 25, so here's a hundred feet. So technically it would cut right here.
Right in front of that.
Yep.
Yep.
And that would still allow room for two people to park back there.
Yeah, really. I mean, it's two cars, they're parked close together, barely.
But when you have two apartments, how many people each have, I mean, how many cars are in a household?
Well, again, I go back to the concern with the, so her concern when she approached us was to have off street parking in the wintertime.
Yeah.
You can only drive one car at a time. And she's got other parking available at her other lots, which are in a reasonable distance. And if there's more than that, you know, when they're not worried about snow removal, they can be parked on the street because they got rid of that no parking after 2:00 AM stuff, after they did the streetlight project. So it's, it's not that there isn't enough room in what she has is my, is what I'm trying to say. It just.
Well, and then we get into, okay, so the other places, you know, that don't have enough parking, we can't get into making sure we can find parking for everybody.
For everybody. That's just it, yep. And that's.
Like the couple that came down here when they got that ticket because they didn't have enough room to park their, their vehicle because they didn't want to go on their grass.
Yeah.
Well, we would really be opening a can if, I mean, if she had no parking and if there isn't easement and everything, I think we'd want to try to work with her by all means. But I do think there is room for two vehicles to park there.
And there was a lot of, you go back to this, even prior to the seventies, there's a lot of people living downtown above them buildings and they managed to find places to park if they needed to. But at that time, there wasn't, the need to park wasn't as much as it is nowadays because they still had everything they needed down there. They had cafes and grocery stores and everything was in mocking distance. So it's, until they come up with a way to change some rules to.
I think we need to get it clarified where because I do feel she needs to be able to put up signs so people do not park there other than her tenants. And if that curb cuts across there, I mean, but driving down there, there is, I believe, room for at least two.
Yeah, and you take that curb out, you get four in there on an angle without any problem at all. So.
I'd check out the details for sure. Make sure where it does finish out and we go from there.
This was clear as mine.
Clear to me, but as far as where that's showing, but whether it's, has been changed since then.
Right.
Is my main question.
I bet they probably have.
Okay, so we'll just leave on unfinished business?
Sure.
Any mayor council communication tonight?
I'd mentioned earlier, before the meeting with Shane, I've been getting, I wouldn't really call them complaints, but it's just voice and their opinions. From people watching at home, in order to hear us, they have to have their TV set turned all the way up and they can, they can hear it. They're not hearing anybody unless they come up to a microphone and they shouldn't be anyway, but, so I would ask them to notify City Hall or get ahold of me, whatever, with their cable provider, whether it's digital or, or, or just a flat screen hookup so we can figure out if there's still a problem. And see if we can come up with a solution.
Well, at one time, didn't you say there, that there's the different mics?
Tried that one mic with her and it didn't change anything.
Didn't change anything.
But I honestly think it's between there and obviously that, that one's been cutting out the whole council meeting and the other one hasn't. So to me, that kind of shows me that maybe one provider, but.
Which one is it on, on the right? Is that VAS over there or is that Charter?
Maybe it was after.
Chargers, I think that one's VAS. I want to say it's VAS. Because the one on the left, I know Charter's always has the delay in it and that's the only, the last one.
Yeah, because they've gone all digital and they all go through the boxes on it. I know VAS is trying to work on their two systems. If you've got a flat screen, you don't need to buy their digital box. But if you don't, then.
That's their third cutout since this meeting started with VAS. So obviously our system's putting out the signal, but.
We'll have to call them.
Obviously VAS people can't hear us probably, but.
Well, I'll hear it bottom when I get home.
It's best for them to call too.
Yep, yeah.
There's one paying the bill, so.
But you know, back when we used to have VAS, we could never hear the council meetings. And I don't know if there was another channel we could have went on or, but it was always muffled, I think. Okay, do.
Is that the one that's out is VAS?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I should have said any discussion.
Discuss. Discuss to read for no discussion.